Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the second of two public hearings during the FY24 operating budget process. At our January 11th Board of Education meeting, I presented my proposed budget to the board. On January 18th, we held our first budget hearing. Tonight's hearing on that proposed budget is the next step in the process. Following the public hearing speakers, the board will convene for a work session on the budget. At that time, we will provide updates from the last meeting. Largely, that will be to address preliminary state revenue figures we received with the release of the governor's budget. On February 8th, at the regular monthly meeting, the Board of Education will officially adopt their FY24 budget request, which will be submitted to the county commissioners. With that, we will hear from public speakers who have signed up for public comment. Speakers who signed up for public comment will be allotted three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a question and answer period, and individuals may also submit written comments. We have one speaker for this evening, Brendan Gallagher.
As this board meets together for the first time to adopt a budget, I want to offer a perspective of where we have come from to guide the vision going forward. While all of you have deep ties to Carroll County and our school system, none of you were seated on this board from 2008 to 15, when salaries were frozen for seven years and tremendous cuts to our school programs were made. Today, our schools are still recovering from those drastic cuts and austerity measures, and we are not able to provide the services to students we once did when I was hired 15 years ago. Despite these challenges, the excellence and passion of our teachers have made our schools work. However, increased costs are causing financial hardship for many career in technology programs, and if something isn't done, we will not be able to meet the needs of our students to prepare them to compete on a global level. Prior to 2008, the budgets of CTE programs in Carroll County had a built-in 5% increase each year to account for inflation. When our county was cutting costs and freezing budget, that yearly increase went by the wayside, and to my knowledge, has never even come up in conversation since. Additionally, we've seen the number of students attending the Career and Technology Center increase, but programs educating those students have seen very little, if any, increase in their yearly budgets. For instance, in 2012, the biomedical sciences program expanded and doubled in size, yet the yearly budget increased by 50%. In 2014, our program size doubled again, yet this time, the budget increased by even less, just 35%, and has not increased since, and that's a common theme with most of our programs. Additionally, inflation has hit many programs at the Career and Tech Center hard, as they are much more affected by the cost of rising goods. In the past year alone, the biomedical science program has seen costs of materials increase by over 37%. Culinary arts has seen the price of eggs jump from 12 cents to 59 cents per egg, and they can no longer justify using butter in their recipes. Carpentry has seen the price of lumber jump over 400% at times since 2019. Welding and applied mechanical engineering have seen the price of steel jump 75%, with welding wire jumping almost 100% from $1 a pound to $1.92 a pound. Cosmetology has seen the cost of their products increase by 25%, while the kits that the students must pay for has increased over $500 per kit. Due to the combination of inflation and our budgets being stuck in 2008, we will not be able to offer the same educational opportunities that we once did to students going forward. While federal and state money can provide a new building and state-of-the-art equipment, it does us no good if that equipment is just collecting dust, because our county is not willing to provide the materials needed to be able to run them. Many programs rely on the donations, goodwill of our community partners, and product sales to fund their programs. However, all of these should add value to the program, not be the reliant source of viability as they currently are for many programs. We have over 15 years of deferred maintenance on our program support budgets coming due, and as stewards of the school system, it's incumbent upon you to understand the history of these experiences and to address them in a meaningful way, so that the Career and Tech Center can continue to provide a world-class education to Carroll students and provide skilled workers for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we only had one speaker this evening, we'll move into our work session. So for the work session this evening, we will again cover an overview of revenues, expenditures, identified priorities, and updates on state funding. As I mentioned at the beginning, the biggest change is that we now have preliminary state figures based on the governor's budget. Overall, they align with our projects. The biggest change was that the state adjusted how it identified students under the compensatory education program. Numbers went up dramatically across the state and here in Carroll as well. We will cover this in our presentation, as well as my recommendation for how we will address the increased funding in this area. At this point, I will turn things over to Rob Burke, our chief financial officer, to begin the presentation. Mr. Shockney, Mr. O'Neal, and I will be joining in throughout. Mr. Burke?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. So, a good bit of the information we've seen, as it was presented originally in our initial budget hearing, but we've updated again with some of the state revenues, so we'll cover that as we go. Again, the state revenue outlook. Some of the increase in state revenue was planned and built into our budget estimate, as well as the impacts of an enrollment increase. But as was mentioned, we did receive then, on January 20th, the governor's budget, some additional information to accompany that, and more since, over the week or so since. So generally, our estimate of state revenue in the various programs that the state revenues cover was fairly accurate. We'll have some minor adjustments to make as we continue to get more information and head toward final adoption later in the spring. Again, the major exception was the compensatory education piece. More on that here. So as was mentioned, the state changed the methodology for identifying free and reduced meal students, farm students. What we saw was across the board in some way, nearly every jurisdiction with significant increases, so sort of the calculation to determine eligible students created a lift across the whole state. I think I saw in the paper today, an article about the impact that's having at the state level, the total amount of additional funding required at the state level, over $390 million across the state. So a little bit of a shock to their budget plans for blueprint implementation, with an average increase there in total enrollment of 11.6% across the state. We had a significant increase in Carroll County public schools, and the result was approximately $11.2 million in additional compensatory education funding. So again, restricted for that use, so that was not built into our plans. That was revenue resulting from this additional eligible students that we weren't planning on. We saw a significant jump in our percentage of student population qualifying as farm students, but as I mentioned, it was across the state, and so we remain on a statewide basis at the last in the state at 24th. So, a significant jump, but it didn't move us relative to other jurisdictions. So it moves our state share for compensatory ed from $11.7 million to $22.9 million. The local share that accompanies that in the blueprint, from $13.9 million to $25.7 million. And so, the issues we spoke about over the last month or so, as we were working through the budget and preparing, gets widened from about $25.5 million to over $48 million now in total comp ed funding, and affects our plans into the future as to how we can use that restricted funding.
Mr. Burke, I'll just say that, you know, most people, when they hear that we're going to get more funding from the state, would think that that's a good thing. But can you explain a little bit about how that adds to our budget problems?
Right, so, if you want to. That looks better on a computer screen. So, what this was, that today was an attempt to show how this adjusts, well, this adjusts every share or every program area under the blueprint, but you can see compensatory as, compensatory ed as well, about middle of the, middle of the graph. The top box is the state funding or the state share, that is our total state aid under the blueprint for '24, at least as it shows up in the governor's budget. And the bottom box is what that means for the required local shares from the county government, and that's by far the biggest change, and it in essence, just about doubles the two shares together. And again, all of the guidance we have is that these columns, or these buckets, or these amounts of funding, these program areas, whatever you want to call them, are restricted to their purpose, and then furthermore restricted to be spent mostly at the school level. So, the $26 million, $25 million, whatever number we've used here or there, as we've had this discussion at your meetings, at joint meetings with the commissioners, at the delegation meeting back in, I think, the end of November, just became essentially a $48 million problem, or up to a $48 million challenge, I guess, I guess is the better word. So, by fiscal '25, which is still based on what we've heard, we believe we're accountable to showing that we're spending these pots of money, or these buckets of money, where they're, you know, where they're allocated for those programs. Moves from '26 to '48, I don't know if you want me to jump ahead, Superintendent. On the expenditure breakout slide, the recommendation from the superintendent is that we do our best to spend the additional $11 million from the state next year, where we know they want us to spend it. And so then, in fiscal '25, that takes that $48 million adjustment of resources, or adjustment of staffing that we've been talking about, down to more like $36 or $37 million. If we don't spend this $11 million in new state money here that way, then it's the full $48 billion that needs to be accounted for in the subsequent fiscal year. So like Superintendent said, it's hard to say. It's not good to get more money. It's probably, I guess, always good to get more money, but the restricted nature of this really, you know, really shows up, and it shows up in a big way there. It also doubles, you know, roughly doubles the local share. Again, that does not put the county above total share amount exceeding maintenance of effort, but it does close that gap more than I would have ever envisioned it could be closed in one year. It's nowhere near being closed, but that's a pretty substantial increase there as well.
Mr. O'Neal, can you speak to the change that the state made in identifying students? Has something to do with Medicaid?
So, from the beginning of the blueprint, the process or the method to identify compensatory education students or farm students was always supposed to change, and kind of in two steps. And the first step was that the state would use what they call direct certification, and it is something we've talked about here. This is what it looks like when you get, when you get what you've talked about. We've talked about, for instance, how during the pandemic, as the federal regulations were relaxed and free meals were for everyone, then there's a disincentive for families to fill out the USDA farms application. So in the past, students were counted, students were part of the count. If their families successfully completed the application and qualified, they were farms-identified student. And then with a couple of other, much smaller in size examples, there was some direct certification for families who qualified under the federal SNAP and CHIP programs, I believe, and there's probably people in this room who are more knowledgeable about that than me who could speak to it. Those students were also counted historically through direct certification. What changed this year is the step took, the first, the state took the first big step forward to changing the methodology, and any student of any family who qualifies for Medicaid is automatically in the count, and that's, that's the, that's the increase of 110,000 statewide and almost 3,000 here locally. There's, so the state's sort of figuring this out too, because that was a $391 million blueprint bill in one year that I don't think they were anticipating. I've also heard some conversations that, at the state level, that they expect this to be, that this year's number will adjust down a little bit in the future, or somewhat in the future, because there, I'm not putting this junk in stock, but there were some regulations that were relaxed, that had been relaxed at the federal level for families who can automatically qualify under the CHIP and the SNAP programs, and those expire after this year, and so there's some sense that this is, this is a number that will be rebased at some level in '25, but it was already our most challenging program there, and I don't have any insight under what anyone thinks that rebasing could look like. So that's, that's the change, and then, and it's probably not valuable to the discussion tonight, but the next change under the blueprint in the future is to move from this kind of methodology at all to something that's called community indicators of poverty, or you sometimes hear them refer to it as a census tracking method, so to actually sort of get to poverty levels in communities based on income rather than qualifying programs. So that looms somewhere in the future, but this is the big change for fiscal '24.
Now, these 3,000 for next year, will they automatically be signed up again?
They will.
Or roll over, or do the, will the parents have to fill out the forms? That's, that was always a gotcha.
They will automatically count for our compensatory ed number so long as the families qualify for Medicaid, SNAP, or CHIP, and/or fill out the free and reduced meals forms. Whether or not they automatically qualify for free and reduced meals, I would assume that they do, but I might, I may need to help over.
He's shaking his head.
Yes.
Yes, I'm looking.
So, this will be the methodology until they move to the census tracking method, or the, same thing sometimes referred to as the, uh, community indicators, community indicators of poverty. They're modeling that now, so we've seen some preliminary work on that, and what that might look like, but the last thing I saw had like seven models, so I think they're a bit away from when and how that will be implemented.
Because in years past, it was very important for all those parents to fill out all those forms and applications, so.
Not now.
Not now. Okay, that's a really big change.
And President Herbert, if this was any prior year, when the funding was unrestricted, this would be nothing but shouting great news. Under the model of restriction, this is a bit of a challenge to work through.
Oh, I, I understand.
Is there any hope to having the restricted nature of it altered? Because this is a significant difference that we're now needing to have to plan for. I mean, it completely changes the picture of, of how we structure and fund things.
So, here's what I think for whatever that's worth. I have heard people tell me that they've heard conversations at the state that there is no penalty. I think, I think that's true in fiscal '24. I don't think anybody's going to be financially penalized next fiscal year, but I think there's the possibility for fiscal '25. Everything, everything that we, that I've heard, and I think these folks would agree that they're hearing, their statewide meetings, many of which were in the same meeting, is the fiscal accountability comes in fiscal '25, and you need to spend 100% within your program area, and 75% of those totals at the school level, and that's the accountability measure, and that you need to adjust resources. They say at different ways. You need to stop thinking about the way your schools have always been and looked, and reimagine them differently. You need to consider these as opportunities instead of challenges. What is really hard, and you know, a lot of meetings I go to, people say, parents especially say, "Tell me exactly how many teachers my, my school will lose, and do it right now or else." And I can't do that comfortably, because it's, at best, at best, that's a guess, to be honest, because there's a lot of guidance, yet unwritten, from, from the state officials, including, they can get really complicated really quickly, way too much complicated probably for tonight's session, but not every student who is a compensatory ed student is only a compensatory ed student. That same student might also be a special ed student, might also be a language learner. You could have a student that falls into multiple columns on that spreadsheet. So some guidance would really be helpful from the state on how, you know, precisely how much money are we supposed to be tracking per student down to the school level? And, you know, there's sometimes, they reference things like layering services or stacking services. So what does that mean on the fiscal, fiscal accountability back end? And we don't really get those answers yet. And then, is there reasonable flexibility, and, you know, probably for each of us in this room, or us versus the state perspective, what's reasonable may differ, but, you know, some of our schools have, all of our schools have some compensatory ed students in them. I don't think we have a single school that has none, but some have a very small population. Some have, for us in Carroll, a very high population, but most are somewhere in a continuum, you know, near the middle. So, like on the far side of the school that's going to get all the resources, what about the school that just has a very small population, and we're supposed to put a very small amount of compensatory money there? What does that school do with that? So, you know, is there flexibility to say, okay, that, you know, literally the math would say this, but in order to have something viable in this school in terms of programming, it really needs to be about this much money. Can you live with that? Or are we going to get dinged for that? None of those answers are forthcoming, and it's, and at least for me, it's impossible. It's extremely hard to envision exactly what this means every school would look like, and so I'm left by saying, it's going to be very noticeable. It's not, we, we were at the, some of you were with us at the Community Advisory Council the other night. You're not going to walk into your school and a couple of years and go, something seems a little different. You're going to walk into your school and go, this is really different. This is, this is substantially a different way of, of operating this school. But we can't pin down, it's this many teachers in this school, with this many assistants and that sort of thing, until a lot of those questions get answered.
Excuse me. John, you've been asked to move your mic closer to you.
Sorry.
That's okay. And I'm just going to butt in for one second. We have a very well-oiled machine now, but this is going to change the machine, and it's going to be a very large change, and it's going to affect us all. It's going to affect every school. And it's a shame, because we have done so well as, as a, as a school system, but this is really changing the whole way we work and spend our money. And it's so direct, and it's, it's going to be difficult. So, so just a reminder, everybody, speak into your mic.
I guess I just said, did have one sort of follow-up comment, and I totally appreciate the predicament that you're in. I might suggest, though, that instead of asking the questions of clarity at the state, that we, if we can maybe try to change it around a little bit and say, this is what we need to do in order to make it work, and, and kind of go down that path, rather, because whenever we ask for guidance and direction, the answer always seems to be, in a way, that hurts us even more. So I'm almost thinking that can we be proactive in, in a way of saying, this is how we're going to have to do it, in order to make it work with how we understand the, the regulation to be stated? Does, does that make sense? Like, instead of asking for guidance, let's provide what we think are the solutions that we need. Like, okay, this is, we think that we can make it work if we can do this.
So a couple, in general, yes, and then a couple more specific, am I good now? A couple more specific follow-ups to that? Okay. One, I think we are, so the superintendent's directed us in a couple of different directions. Before this became known, a little bit after January 20th, she's already asked Mr. Shockney to sort of lead an effort, when we thought it was $26 million, to figure out what makes sense for us to reallocate, and so that, that plan still goes on as well. My mic just came on, or my voice changed.
Yes. That's good.
Secondly, with the new $11 million based on her recommendation in this budget, which is still yours to discuss and decide, but there's no time to waste, so she's directed us to consider plans for how, how would that money be distributed among our schools? And so, you know, we've begun that work, and it's a lot of work, and, and folks are working on that, and that work will eventually expand from the core group who's, who's working on it now, down to include more stakeholders at the school level. At the same time, on the fiscal accountability, they will be clear about that someday. There's no doubt, this isn't sort of an esoteric question about, can you better define teacher time? Is that, there's a, and what do they call it? Drew's been here a while, the MSD Fiscal Reporting Manual. There's a manual that's been around probably since 1867 that sometimes gets updated. They have to eventually update that and provide us the guidance for exactly what, what they will expect. And I think they've already started it a little bit, in the sense that for a couple of months now, we've had to report expenditures by program area to them, and so there is a little bit of feedback coming, but the level of detail needed to sit down and say, this is exactly what we count, is sort of, we're still short on that. And we're also focused on getting the, you know, the implementation plan together in time as well. So there's, there's a lot of parts here, but I do think we are trying to be proactive, and when we get there to the finish lines of those two models, we will have some ranges to say, you know, here's what we think, why wouldn't this work, kind of a thing? And then always, and I'll keep saying this till Mrs. Herbert makes me stop again, we need time to implement it, whatever it is. It can't all be implemented in fiscal '25, but right now, we haven't heard anything different than that. You need to smooth, when it was $26 million, or now it's 48 or 37, depending on this $11, you need to smooth that in over some years. You can't make that change in one year without all of the, all of the problems that will come with that.
Things breaking.
So, you know, and we're hopeful that they'll see that and agree with that, but.
But we haven't, we haven't heard any indication that they do hear that and agree with that. We're hoping to, to hear something like that, and so at this point, we're starting the process of talking with parent groups and staff, so that everybody starts to understand what the ramifications of this will be for our school system, in that resources, in many forms, but all, but definitely in the form of staff, will have to be moved from certain schools to other schools. And that means that we will have larger class sizes and fewer services in certain schools than we will have in other schools. And so, as John said, we don't have numbers for you at this time, but I, what we're trying to do at this point is find ways to start communicating that reality, so that that's not a shock when, when we begin that process.
Thank you. Parents need to be informed of this gigantic change.
They do need to be informed, and I think we need to better understand it as well, right? Like, if, if we have a fairly, and we don't have very many Title I schools in our county, and I, I don't think there's significant disparities between the percentage of farm kids at, at a lot of our schools, so trying to understand why is it going to be so different for certain schools versus others, right? Like trying to.
So the reason for that is that the money will follow each and every child. So, as Mr. O'Neal said, depending on which baskets each of our students falls into, that amount of funding will go with them wherever they go to school, and we'll have to show that 75% of that funding is being used at that location. And so, you know, we, we will have a disparity between how many free and reduced meal students are at one school versus at another school in another part of the county. And so that will mean that the funding will be vastly different for one school than another school.
And is that, I, obviously, we haven't had a chance to digest all of this and dissect it, right? But with the additional identification of the Medicaid, the additional 3,000 students, we don't know whether that changes the allocations across the different schools, right?
We, we have begun looking at that, and there might be a couple of, you know, little changes that you would say, okay, there's, there's a little bit of an adjustment, but overall, the schools, overall, it's proportionate to where the, the base already was. And so, you know, to your question, our starting point. And so, you know, to your question, our starting point for the modeling, we know who our students are, we know our full enrollment, we know every, every, every other category. So the starting point is that number of kids times a per diem amount of that amount of money, what does that look like by school? And there are some wide, some wide swings there, some very big swings there. And on the, on the other end, I alluded to this earlier, for the schools that have a very, very small compensatory population, you know, how meaningful is that amount of money to that school? What, you know, there might be a school that we give like, Nick, like 50,000 is one of the smaller numbers. It's never bad to get 50,000. Brittany was just talking about that. But at that school, how much programming can you do for that group of students? And so those are the kinds of questions I have. But could that be 120,000? And then a couple of staff members could be there for resource and that's, you know, then it makes a little more sense, I think. And we need a lot of those answers. And, and I know we, we stay on this topic because it is clearly the biggest challenge ahead of us. This also applies to English learners. This also applies to special ed. This also applies to pre-K and TSI and other areas where we have to come into compliance as well. So there's, there's a lot to plan here.
My largest concern is that the unrestricted funding that we can use across the system for all students is not going to be enough for every school to function in a successful way. It's certainly not going to be able to function the way it does now. There's no way that all schools will have the number of resources that they have today. And how will that affect some schools? How will it affect the students, the teachers, the student achievement, the student's social, emotional status? It's going to have major impact on certain schools. And right now, we're just starting to, you know, wrap our minds around that reality.
And I think that's going to really be helpful for us because again, you know, just hearing the general statements, you know, schools are going to be affected. We know they are going to be affected, but when we can really see it, you know, on paper, you know, these are the schools and, you know, this would be their allocation, you know, this is how much more or how much less they would be receiving and this is how it would impact their programs. I think then it will begin to make a little more sense as it becomes clear. So I appreciate you working on that, that picture for, for yourselves and for us at this time. And I think that's going to be helpful.
We've had some very preliminary discussions around, you know, what would those resources need to be to shift? And, you know, there are, there are obviously there are instructional materials and things that either we could procure or might need to shift or, or move around. But our, you know, the, the, the resource with the greatest expense behind it is staff. So there is no doubt about it that there will be a significant impact to how we, we won't, like Ms. McCabe said, we won't be able to staff schools as we currently staff schools. And I think we would argue there are a lot of other resources that we need across our system right now. So not only, you know, are we, we're not going to, you know, expand, but we're also going to definitely be shifting from some places to the other. So we've, we've had some very preliminary discussions on what our needs may be and try to think creatively to start to, to plan that out. But it's very difficult to kind of work our way back down to it's going to mean this school is, you know, losing this and this school is gaining that. We'll, we'll get to that in time. And as Mr. O'Neil said, there's still a lot of questions that we need answered that will help us work through that process, so.
Ms. Pataglia.
So, so when I'm here, when I, when I constantly hear that, you know, the money's going to follow the kid, and I think that's important. And I think that's something we, you know, it always should do. But I will say, I think one of my concerns is going to be, so let's say a parent finds out another school, that's where all the teachers are and all the resources are. Their child might not need all the assistance because they don't qualify for those services. Do we foresee a potential of a lot of out-of-district requests to go to a school that has all those resource teachers, that has all the extra staff?
We've thought about that. We've had preliminary discussions about that. And we've thought, depending on how this, this ends up, we may be bringing to you revisions to our current out-of-district policy. Because right now, we've been able to be very much open with parents about where they choose to send their children to school, as long as they can provide the transportation and as long as that school, you know, isn't at its maximum. But with this, that may change, that may change what we're able to do so that we can avoid, you know, too many parents trying to send their children to a school that has more staff, more layers of service than another school.
Mr. Whistler.
Thank you so much for all the explanation. I really, it's just, I keep hearing over and over again that these requirements seem to be, these fiscal requirements seem to be tied to a purpose or a demographic. Is there any mention in the requirements? Are, are there any ties to academic benchmarks or achievement?
So, good question, Ms. Whistler. I think the, the way in which the state intends to monitor or track that for every local school system is, is separate from the fiscal expenditures in the local implementation blueprint plan that we're working on to be, to be turned in later than March 15 to the state. So there's fiscal accountability under the blueprint, which is, which is these columns and will be held accountable for what our expenditures look like. There's overall accountability and performance, which is partly the, the local implementation plan. What are your benchmarks in that plan over time and do you meet them? And then thirdly, or secondly, in terms of performance accountability, there's something called expert review teams. So expert review teams of folks trained and operated by the state will show up in every school in Maryland eventually. And separately, there's, there, separately, there are expert review teams just for career and technical education programs. So they would show up, in our case, at, at Career and Technology Center and they do sort of site visits. Like this might be kind of loose, but like for schools that have been through middle states accreditation, a series of experts are going to come in, they're going to observe classroom instruction, they're going to hold focus groups of students and parents and faculty and staff, and they're going to look at curricular materials and other resources. And then they're going to write a report and say, you're, you know, here's what we like and here's what we would like to see. So there's moving parts of accountability here under the blueprint.
But I think, Mr. Whistler, I think what you're asking is, is the state looking at our students who are having difficulty passing MCAP and saying, are you going to take this group of students and give them extra service? And the answer to that is no.
Yeah, that was the assumption. And the assumption I'm making is that they think in Annapolis that if we spend the money this way, if we build it, they will come. If we spend it this way, the academic achievement will get better. Is there any flexibility or in the regulations? For example, we don't hit academic benchmarks. Can we vary the spending or change the spending? Is there any flexibility in there?
Maybe. We haven't heard that yet. We certainly hope so. And, you know, maybe to that point, I, I don't think, because I have never heard them say that if you have a school with a certain farms population and this much money goes there to provide resources because of that farms population, certainly those resources have to serve that, the farms population, but I don't hear anything that it can also serve the broader, the broader school. The biggest challenge is the foundation column, which is the first one there on the screen. That's everything else. And in their minds, dating back to the Kerwin Commission, there's, they will say this, you have all of the money you need for all of these other things in the foundation. And I can't figure that out because we're operating and every, every dollar's being used to operate today. And, you know, we were, our weekly meeting, we were talking and, you know, we've, and we're, we're highly successful comparatively. We have a lot of work to do, but we're, we're always highly successful. We've, we've reached that level of success based on how we operate right now. And this is shifting some of that. But the, and if you were to look even just on MSD's website where they talk about blueprint funding, they, they break out these areas and say, you know, this is what this program area means. And the foundation means everything else. And so, you know, in their belief, that's where you go find those other resources to put wherever you want to put them because you have the money in the foundation. But when you start doing the math for us, at least here, that's why you're asking the county for 13.4 million dollars. Because if you want to give raises, if you, if you want to run school buses, if you want to do all of the things you do to run your business, if you want to add resources to schools that aren't falling into a program area, the foundation is where you go for that. And so the superintendent keeps saying in her speaking points, you know, give us what you need for the equity lines. We understand that. We want to help all student populations, but we need more money in the foundation to really make this work.
I just wish the focus were on academic achievement, not just putting a dollar in a bucket and making sure you spend that bucket. But that's, that's, that's not what we're up against here. But I appreciate the explanation.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Whistler. I mean, I, I feel like they're basically saying that you can solve any problem just by throwing more money at it, which is not really what this is about. It's about improving academic achievement. And we're one of the highest performing, if not the highest performing school system in the state because we've figured out how to do things effectively, thus meaning that we need all of it in the foundation, right? Like now they're just saying, if you, if you throw more money at it, suddenly it's going to fix the problem. But does it actually have any impact on academic achievement? And I think what you were asking was, let's say academic achievement actually goes down because of them forcing us to spend it in a way that doesn't work for our population and the way our, our current school system is. Like, is there accountability at the state level to say, okay, you guys now have the flexibility to change, it was working better the way you were doing it?
I'm going to be flippant, but I think, I think the response would be just keep heading towards that cliff. That would be the response in Annapolis, but that's, that's my take.
Right. But is there any way that we can, I, we understand very clearly, our situation is that we need more money in the foundation, right?
Yes, we need less restrictions.
Is there any hope of, of that happening? Is there anything that we can do if we combine with other, other counties that are in similar situations to try to lobby for that cause?
I think more realist, I don't think they're going to re-legislate their formula. I think more realistically, they might be more flexible about the restrictions overall. I do think, I do think more recently, and we've all become more educated, but I do think more recently in some meetings I've been in, and especially after the change in compensatory ed statewide, because I think the majority of counties were probably less like us and now suddenly some of them are more like us because their numbers also went way up. And so whereas they may have had to make less change, now it's like, uh.
Right, because now more money is locked up in the, in the various components.
And, well, and I, and I would just add here that I, I'm not against the idea that in certain schools, it would be nice to have more services or layered services for our students that are in, you know, maybe needier areas or maybe struggling. What I would say to that is, if I could do that now, I would be doing it. Like I believe in that so much that if I had extra resource right now, I would definitely strategically put it in certain schools that are struggling more and offer more services to our students. But we are, we are bone thin everywhere. We, we are, we don't have any extra staff or services for students that I can move from one place to another without drastically affecting the place that I'm pulling it from. So, you know, I don't want anyone to think that we don't believe that there are students who could use extra services and that we wouldn't like to provide that.
Of course.
Absolutely. It's just that, first of all, if we had that, we'd be doing it now because we have some student groups who aren't performing the way we would like them to, to perform. And I have great ideas for what I'd like to be able to do for those students, but we don't have the resources for it now. And unfortunately, the blueprint is not going to help me get there without, without really negatively affecting some other places.
Emily?
Right, it was supposed to be additional, not complete, yeah.
So this is just a bit of a clarifying question. So for students who are in these different demographic areas where the money follows them in the restricted format, does the money come from the foundation? If they're a career and tech student who's in farms, how does that money get divided? Does it go 50 to their homeschool, 50 to career and tech for that program? Or how would that look?
So that would be something excellent to have in the financial reporting manual from MSD when they update it. Those are the kinds of questions that it's a little bit hard to sort out right now. Career and tech is also an interesting area because there is the CCR column on, in the formula. Some of that money has to do with, with CTE education. Some of it has to do with advanced academics like the AP program and dual enrollment. And there are places, this, this could get way too deep, but there are places where the state is saying, you're supposed to layer some funding from your foundation also into that program area. And CCR, including career and technical ed, is one of those areas. So they're, they're also sort of earmarking parts of the foundation for these other purposes as well. So we're, you know, we're going to be in a period of growing pains for a couple of years here. I appreciate what the superintendent just said. I think at the CAC, it came up and we addressed it by saying, what they want us to do now with our state funding, with our, all of our funding, is what we do with our Title I money. You know, that's additional money that, it's a little bit of money. It's additional money we get from the feds, federal government being passed through, and we add services to the schools where there are higher needs. They're basically now saying, do that with your annual operating budget as well. But there's, you can't maintain that baseline and still do that. That's what's making this a little bit challenging. And I'm going to say this even though I know if they watch, they'll be very angry. I have come to think of this, they don't like when you say this at meetings for whatever reason, although I did notice that when Department of Legislative Services briefed the House Appropriations Committee the other day, the DLS person referred to it this way. I now think of these as a series of grants. That's how they operate. These columns on this funding spreadsheet are to me, a series of grants, more or less. And yeah, the foundation is much less restricted than the others, which are clearly for that, but they're grants.
So I can't take money that I used to pay for heat and air conditioning and use it for that anymore. Those dollars might have to go over here to do something else. And that's why we're saying, we need more in the foundation. We need more control over how we spend that money just to keep our system operational.
And all of those things are not pictured here. Now, the state says that's all in the foundation and you have it all there, but not pictured here are your technology costs, infrastructure and operations, your facilities costs, operations and maintenance, security, more than half of transportation. There's less than half of transportation in the state formula and none in the local share. And then most importantly, except for a little bit of the career ladder, compensation for your employees, healthcare for your employees, insurances for your employees and your, and your organization. All of that is not pictured here, but still exists. And, and they would say that's in the foundation. And that's why you asked them for 13.4 million because they're the foundation now, you know?
Well, interesting, you, so you made the comment about, you know, our farms enrollment went from 14% to 25% and that made the picture even bleaker, which is sort of counterintuitive, right? Because, okay, we're going to get 11 more, 11 million more from the state, but it's just that much more that we have to pull out of the foundation to put into other services. So it just compounds the problem. But so other jurisdictions might not have been in the same predicament that we were in when, when we were just working off of farms percentages. But if that situation got exacerbated for every jurisdiction, do we think that there are now other jurisdictions that find themselves in the same position as us? And that would maybe bolster the argument of trying to get more money into the foundational piece across the state?
I think more of the same position or somewhat closer to the same position. And it could be this topic or any, like I've heard it lately on dual enrollment meetings I've been in where other counties who up till now, I haven't really heard much of this out of, are saying, well, wait a minute. You're saying, take it from the foundation, but that's already built into my base. Somewhere that's being spent, so what do I change? But they're also, I don't think they're unaware of that. They're challenging us to rethink what we're, isn't that what they say? Reimagine how you're, how you operate your system. So I, I think at some level, they expect us to make changes. I don't know if they fully understand the, you know, the depths of it. And other counties are sort of, and I don't know what their internal, they could have been there all along, but I've heard more verbalized at state meetings lately on many topics like, okay. okay, what do I give up to take that out of the foundation?
The difference is that no other system has been cutting for 14 years. So they have more things that they can go to and say, I can cut here because I've been adding things to this program for 14 years. And now I can cut that program or cut here or there in order to add the resources I need to add to the needier schools. Since we have been cutting instructional staffing for 14 years, and we've cut about 300 instructional positions over that time, there's nothing to go to now to cushion this blow.
And you've made that point many times, which I appreciate. And it's just, it's coincidental, I suppose, because we didn't want to cut anything and we didn't plan to cut a certain amount. But I, I believe the number of total FTE we reduced in those years was like 343 or 333 or something like that. And I think it was actually 229 in the classroom. That 343 would get you pretty close to what Nick needs to not shift so much from certain schools into other schools. So that, that's more salient of a point for me as we start to pick this apart than it had, you know, had ever been. Like, wow, if we had those FTE back, this isn't as ugly a proposition as it is right now.
What about the, so, I mean, the whole hold harmless legislation that was in place for a couple of years because of declining enrollment? I mean, the, the reason that we ended up in the situation that we're in was because of the declining enrollment for, for several years. Well, a compounding effect of a bunch of things, but that was part of it, was the declining enrollment, right? So we, we would have needed to reduce FTE and, to be commensurate with the declining enrollment anyway. But, so the other jurisdictions that were in that same position, though, were, there were three counties that were in hold harmless, right?
At, at different times, Kent, Kent was there probably all of those years. Garrett, maybe almost all of those years. And for some years, Allegheny, Allegheny's demographic of poverty is much higher, and so they do a little bit better under even the old formula, but in a similar place. But there aren't any counties with, how shall I say this? Counties with a delegation who would be able to make change in Annapolis. And the one year that we really saw immediate change in hold harmless was there was sort of this one or two-year blip where the city fell into our exact situation and delegate Krebs and the entire delegation, but I specifically started working with delegate Krebs. You know, we had immediate response. The Chair of Appropriations at that time was a delegate from the city, and voila, we were all uplifted immediately. We're growing again, and so the foundation is growing. You know, it grew this year, but some of those, it's the same students. So some of those students also fall into those other columns as well. And so proportionally, it might all grow the same.
Right. Yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit worried, like the same, same comments that you were making about the out-of-district requests as being an unintended consequence. There might also be, we might fall back into a situation where we start declining in enrollment again as parents see what's happening. You know, if they, they don't want their kids in, you know, class sizes of 50, they're gonna pull them out and, and put them in private school, or they're gonna homeschool them. So it could, it could send us back into...
I, I agree with you. You know, people move and stay in Carroll County for two reasons. Safe neighborhoods and great schools. And this blueprint will change what schools look like now. And I don't know that parents will want to stay here for their children if, if, if something doesn't change because the schools will not look the way they do now. They won't be staffed the way they are now. And I don't know that I can get the results that I'm getting now.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, we significantly outperform, or like, it, it's, it's pretty commonly known that, you know, academic achievement follows per capita income, right? Like, I mean, that's, there, there's a definite correlation there, right? And per capita income in Carroll County, we're like somewhere between eight and 10 in the state, but we're consistently number one and number two in the state from an academic perspective. Because of the way we run our school system, we outperform the rest of the state from that perspective. But I, I really feel like a lot of this is actually gonna harm, it's gonna hurt our program. And I think if we can, maybe if we can find other jurisdictions that maybe, maybe might be new friends because they now, because of this change, might find themselves in the same boat, that we can find a way to lobby for more in the foundation, anything that we can do. I mean, obviously, this doesn't help our, our situation for this year, right? Like, trying to set the budget, but just trying to understand where we can potentially band together with other counties to, to make a positive difference where we're really struggling.
Yeah, and we will continue to do that. You know, each of us attends our state meetings, you know, once a month or more. And so we'll be able to keep track of, you know, as changes happen, who's in the same boat that we are and who may have the appetite to pull together and, you know, have a stronger voice.
Dr. Dorsey?
I appreciate the comments that are being made. And I, I do know certainly that we need to stay focused on academic achievement. As we're looking at academic achievement, though, we've got to make sure that we're looking at it disaggregated. Yes, you know, Carroll County performs well when we look at all of the students at specific grade levels. But when we begin to disaggregate the data, we need to be aware of how our Farms students are performing academically. We need to be aware of how our English language learners are performing. So again, it's not just, you know, okay, yes, put them all together and, you know, come up with the average or whatever. Here's how we look. But we need to pay attention to our, our subgroups. And, you know, as we begin to take a look at the schools and the money that is going to be allocated to the schools, again, we need to be aware of what the populations are like in those schools and what the student achievement is like for those subgroups. Because they're the groups, yes, we want everyone to achieve and do well. But, you know, yeah, we want, we want to see academic achievement for our subgroups.
And Dr. Dorsey, I completely agree with that. But I think, and, and this is something that I've been saying the entire time we were putting together our strategic plan over the last several years. It's like, but you need continuous improvement for everybody. What this is doing is it's saying, okay, when you disaggregate and you've got, you know, Farms performing here and the rest of the student population performing here, we want everybody to go up, and you just want this group to go up faster. But the way this works is the way they're gonna fix the gap is they're gonna do this. Because we're pulling ser, we're pulling like foundational aspects away from the general population to... So it, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna equalize the gap by picking everybody up. It's gonna, it's gonna bring this group down.
Yeah, and again, we're not for bringing any group down. We want all of our students to achieve well. We want our top performing students, our highly able, our gifted students. We want them to continue to show continuous growth and improvement. So just because I'm saying, you know, we need to be aware of those subgroups and their achievements, I'm not saying we want to close the gap by, you know, bringing our top kids down so that our bottom groups can come up and, you know, can begin to close a gap there. No, I'm not saying that. We need achievement for all of the students. But I think what this is sort of forcing us to do is to make sure that we are not losing sight of these specific subgroups and what their achievement is like. You know, we want it for all of the students. And again, please hear me when I say, we don't want to bring our top kids down. We want them all to continue to excel and do well. But we need to be certainly aware of how those subgroups are performing.
Ms. Pataglia?
So, you know, we're, we're having these really good conversations because I like the point you made, but I also like the point that you made, Dr. Dorsey. The one thing that I, and, you know, a couple of parents, you know, contacted me and there's some of their concerns is, you know, we hear about Farm students and their performing levels. Well, not every student that qualifies for Farm is low performing. I mean, there are some, many kids, just because their parents don't make a lot of money, they excel. And, you know, it just seems like there's this, there's stigma, there's a constant stigma. We got, you know, take from here to give to here. This group gets more money because of their income level, but now we're taking from another kid to give to another kid. And then the worry of out of districts because, well, the kid, the school my kid was at, they were getting resources, and now all those teachers are gone, and the class sizes are larger. Well, I don't want my kid there no more. We, I guess I might be the only person thinking this, but this doesn't seem equitable to me. This, this does not seem, I mean, it, it seems, it's not even a one-size-fits-all approach. It's, it's, it's just everywhere. And I'm really afraid for our teachers, you know, I mean, I, class sizes matter. I mean, class sizes matter. As a parent, I know that. I've seen that. When you got smaller classroom sizes, the kids do great, the teachers are able to have the individual time. And when you got larger classroom sizes, this is not gonna be beneficial at all for anything. You know, and we do hear about accountability. And the one thing as I can say is Carroll County has always shown the accountability. We've always shown where the money's gone. I, I don't think we've ever had an issue, you know, with showing that to the state. There's other areas who lie about where the money goes. And unfortunately, we're being, again, I feel like Carroll County is being punished because we do perform well. Our students are doing good. We try to make sure that our students are getting the assistance they need and the help they need. And unfortunately, I, I foresee us not doing well with this because of this, because of blueprint. And I'm, like you said, I, I really see our numbers going down. I see parents pulling, because this isn't good.
All right, let's move forward.
Okay, I'll switch gears into the local revenue outlook. No change here as we presented earlier. The 6.7 million that is built into the county's operating plan from last year. The county hasn't begun a public budget process yet, so that's what we're looking at right now. Again, in identifying our needs and in, as we've just kind of discussed, the importance with unrestricted available revenues to meet the many needs we have. We've, we've come up with an additional request of 6.7 million on top and a total request of 13.4, again, the valuable unrestricted revenues that that would represent. No changes to the majority here of the identified needs in the upcoming year. I won't run through those in detail again. Again, causes of inflation, some of the blueprint pieces that are already upon us this year and next. Some staffing that we're trying to get aligned and build into ongoing revenues. We've made some changes at last board meeting to the substitute rates that's built in here. Again, upcoming salary negotiations, the, the new piece here, the bottom line that wasn't there before, the new state compensatory education funding, as we've been discussing. So we've updated our revenue summary to include the additional 11.2. Again, shows as a significant amount of new revenues over fiscal year '23. But as we've talked, the restrictive nature of the majority of that state revenue certainly, you know, make it a little less open for, for spending.
Mr. Whistler?
Sure. I appreciate it. I, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address the elephant in the room because nobody has to this point. We're requesting an additional 6.7 million from the commissioners. So my question is, what if they can't provide it or don't provide it? And what is the plan of action?
We won't be able to do the things on this list.
On that list, right there.
Right there, okay. So that would be the, the cut then. Okay, thank you.
And I will say one thing. The first thing I look at is security. Our employees have to be safe, our children have to be safe, and we have one person doing security. I want more educators. I want more aides. But we cannot continue with just one person in that security department full-time.
Some of those things we've already funded, like the substitute rates.
But he's not, yes, but he's not, he's not for, until we get this.
Now, the substitute rates, correct me if I'm wrong, the substitute rates, we made the adjustment for the second half of this year and we're using a fund, we're using a reallocation of potentially fund balance if we need to.
Gotcha.
But it needs to be built into the, the plan for next year.
And that is only because we can't run our schools the way we're trying to run them right now with so few substitutes and teachers having to use their planning time to cover someone else's classroom and administrators having to cover classes and lunches and recesses and so on. Again, we are, we are taking educators and having them worry about operational and, and supervision types of issues instead of spending their time looking at instruction and teaching. You know, and then we'll wonder at some point when the data comes in, you know, next year, the year after, why we can't continue to do as well as we did in the past.
And I, I'm jumping around and driving Mr. Burke crazy, but I skipped ahead to slide eight, which is, which is just the numerical representation of the prior slides. So what would happen is if, if the county's unable to meet the funding request, then subtract 6.7 million from here, from somewhere here or some places here is what, that's what your exercise will become between February 8th and May 25-ish.
There's very little we can cut from. Salaries can't touch.
But we're, we are bare bones.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at inflationary impacts, that's gonna happen, right? Blueprint requirements, we have to do that.
Do that.
Transportation, we've already adjusted things. That's just the cost of it for next year. Substitute rates, same situation. So it really comes down to, and, so it's staffing, salaries, and then maybe a less attractive glide path, and even less attractive glide path to the new state comp ed funds.
Yeah, again, my, my concern is I would just hope that you would have a plan already articulated, again, just in case.
Right there. We would have to cut from.
But I'd like a, an idea of what exactly, from where.
Well, we sit down and...
Yeah, you would make that decision based on the list there.
Yeah, we would as a, as Board of Education.
We will need to make that argument with the commissioners, right? Like, if, if we cannot get the additional 6.7 million, this is the, is the impact it has on the, on the system.
It's where the budget process turns after next Wednesday to, to that whole discuss, public discourse and, and process. And then, you know, hit it into Wednesday, though, from this evening's meeting. There's, there's sort of, I guess, two major things we would need from you tonight. If there's anything in the superintendent's budget that you would like to remove or change, we would need to know that. And if there's anything not in the superintendent's budget that you would wish to add, we would need to know that, to have that prepared for you to vote on Wednesday evening. And, and that, of course, would change the revenue request to an even higher number than 6.7. And then lastly, I think, you know, the superintendent's plan with the unexpected or somewhat unexpected comp ed money is to use it in the way that we know they're going to expect us to use it ultimately. So if you wanted to do something, if you wanted to take a different approach, we'll, we'll need to know that tonight as well, so we can bring you the right documents for, for February 8th.
So help, help us understand that a little bit more. So let's say if we, if we did use the, the 11.2 million additional in a different way, that just puts us in a worse starting point for next year's budget, right?
It, so you're, you know, then, we've spoken so much about this in, in the recent months, and the number was always 26 million. That was simply the, the two shares added together for FY '23. That's now 48. So if you spend this differently than how Superintendent McCabe is suggesting, then in fiscal '25, you're, we're going to move $48 million of resources to comply. If you spend it as Superintendent McCabe is recommending, you're still looking at 36, 37 million, but that seems a lot better somehow than 48 million. That's your, that's your choice.
I appreciate it. Again, it's just something that's been eating at me for the last month.
Ms. Vingegaard, I believe that 6 million is what we haven't received in previous years, correct?
Yes, I mean, for, at least 4 million of that 6.7 million was money that we had requested last year to try to catch us up. requested last year to try to catch us up from the, so we, we took MOE during COVID, right?
Five billion.
And so, we lost a year of that planned 6.7 million dollars of funds from the county. So, we had requested to try to get it back, to, to catch us up to that position.
And that would have been 20, over 20 million dollars over these several years that we could have used.
Yep.
By that MOU.
So, it's just, it's just making sure, we're, we are asking for what, you know, what the commissioners had planned, plus what we have not been funded.
Catching us backed up to, back up to what we would have gotten had the pandemic not hit.
And I think it's good for the public to know that too.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Burke.
Okay, just a reminder, uh, the identified costs in the budget aren't, you know, every need the system has. Uh, we've had requests for additional, uh, resources in transportation. There are additional needs in blueprint not being met yet. Uh, we've mentioned before, ongoing costs that, um, you know, we would like to see additional resources in, uh, updating technology and maintaining, uh, facilities and so forth. Many other requests, many other needs, as we've talked about. So, it's not a, uh, you know, a full list of, of every possible, uh, you know, item that could be identified. It's, uh, it's already, you know, pretty, pretty lean in the request, so, um, we've, we've touched on this before. A lot of this came up in discussion, obviously, uh, as we're working toward additional blueprint phase in with, uh, restrictions, with, uh, use at the school level. So, we had sort of talked about in the '24 plan that it, you know, there are restrictions beyond this 11.2 that are not built into this budget plan, but when we, uh, realized the additional 11.2, we just, uh, you know, had that discussion that adding to that, to that issue didn't seem to be in our best interest, so we're looking at the 11.2 million as a beginning phase in of restricted for the compensatory ed program. And again, we've mentioned the consequences of, um, shifting needs across the system. So, move quickly through the final slides. Uh, we have had discussion before. Recall the fund balance from end of last fiscal year '22, 12.8 million, about three and a half percent, sort of midpoint of our fund balance policy. You know, there are certainly opportunities there. We will be reviewing that, um, and bringing back some recommendations in the final version of the budget for some one-time uses in, in particularly those areas of infrastructure. You'll recall, we did build, build in about a million dollars of fund balance in, uh, transportation and special ed as we sort of phase in some cost increases there. So, this list is getting shorter, down to our next steps. Uh, obviously, with tonight's, uh, work session, as Mr. O'Neil mentioned, um, any feedback, any direction that, uh, would have us changing the, um, the numbers in the proposed budget as we head toward, uh, the board meeting next week, we'll build into, uh, the final, final numbers and have them back for your consideration at the February 8th board meeting. And that was all, all I had for now.
Ms. Vingney. I agree with the budget request. I know that, you know, we've got our priorities laid out and said this is what would be included in the 13 for, 13.44 million dollar request. These are the things that would not be included. I think it's a, it's a, given all of the constraints that we're confronted with, I think it's, it's a, it's a good budget request. We can back it up. I think we need to ask for this money from the commissioners, and then we need to work with the commissioners to try to figure out how do we, how to bridge the gap? How do we make this all work? But I think we have to come at it from as many angles as we can in terms of, we know that there's a foundational problem, right? Like, can we find other jurisdictions to try to help fight that fight moving forward? But understanding that it might not change, um, you know, we, we still have to make significant progress this year. I think it would still be very helpful to understand, I know I've asked for this a couple of times now, but the glide path of what does this mean for the next two years after this year, right? Like, because we know that this is just the first year of the blue, uh, first year, first step towards full implementation of blueprint. I feel like I need to, in order to totally justify our request to the commissioners, I need to understand, okay, what is, what does year two look like and what does year three look like? So, we understand what is the full extent of the glide path to get us to full blueprint, blueprint implementation.
And staff has started working on that.
Okay.
So, yes, we, we heard that the last time we met, and we've begun to work on what that will look like, what our needs will be over the next several years. Uh, as Mr. O'Neil said, there's still a lot of questions, and so we have some questions out there to MSD that we hope we can get answered so that we can have better, better numbers for you over the, those next several years.
Right, and I, I appreciate that, and I, I understand it's not an insignificant amount of work to go into those, you know, couple of year-out projections. But I think if we can just get a gen-, like, it doesn't have to be precise, right? If we can just get an idea, like, okay, now we're talking about, you know, is it, is it 10 million the following year, or is it 30 million the following year, right? Like, okay, what, what?
Right.
Or somewhere in that range, right? Like, where, where, what is it gonna be for the next two years? I think that would be really helpful. But I agree with the budget that you've put together and feel that it is supportable, um, a supportable request to the commissioners.
And I thank everyone on this team here that has done a lot of hard work. You three gentlemen, Drew in the back, we can't, can't thank you enough also. Uh, this is a very difficult time, and Commissioner Ross Stein, I am so glad that you're here. And, and we, and I, we really need to work together, and, uh, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your other commissioners, but we really need to work with this together because this is a new chapter in our lives, and we have never had so many state mandates, silos, tunnels, whatever you wanna call this, that is making this very difficult and has changed our whole way at look, at looking at a budget. And we definitely need to prepare for the out-years, but I want to thank you for being here tonight, Ed, and, uh, we definitely need work hand in hand.
If I can just...
Absolutely.
No, I, I appreciate, and I appreciate all the comments, and, um, it definitely is a team sport, and it's not just the Board of Education, the Board of County Commissioners, but it is the community, so public comments mean a lot. And, you know, like you, we listen, um, for any action that we're requesting public comments, you know? The, it's the community, it's the county, it's the county's budget, it's the people's budget, it's not yours or ours. Yes, we do navigate it like you're doing now, and the county commissioners do, but I also want to be very clear that it's very important to be open, we use the word transparent, put everything on the table, you know, um, and try not to get misinterpreted in, when we do this, um, because that's what happens. You know, when we talked about in our joint meeting, what revenue streams are out there, and I brought up taxes, it wasn't saying I want to increase taxes, and I still am very clear in saying that it is not my intent to increase taxes, it is my intent to understand what revenue and what taxes do in the county as far as bringing revenue in. Unfortunately, it gets, I'm not sure what the right word is, but misinterpreted is best, um, and used very, uh, you know, inappropriately, you know, whether it's, uh, in the papers or on social media. It's best, reach out to us, you know? I know you're an open book, and I know you're very receptive to the community reaching out to you, just as I am in my colleagues. We've got a long ways to go, it is gonna be very difficult, there's a lot of unknowns. Uh, I came back from Annapolis today, and there's just, uh, a lot of unknowns over the next few months as they're trying to figure all this stuff out legislatively. But, uh, yeah, whatever you need from us, you know, let us know. Good presentation, a lot of hard work has been put into this, and it's not just over the last year, it's been added, like you said, years of, um, challenges that have now gone to a point where we've got to do something, um, you know, for the best, uh, interest of our kids, so.
I thank you. Because Carroll County Public School System is one of the best advertisements for Carroll County. People wanna come live here because we have fantastic schools, thanks to our dedicated educators, and also a safe place to live. So, uh, we definitely need to work hand in hand to work out this budget for the best of the community, our employees, and our students. And I thank everyone for coming tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.